Obviously, the city has a huge role and we've actually had presentations before the city council in respect to how we prepare obviously some of the emergency facilities to be used at the airport. We had a great presentation about fire department that gave us the intricacies of how we would react in case of an emergency. So I'm actually very comfortable in respect to where we are, our group, our public safety. They analyze the what if scenarios, what would happen if this happened. We've gone through the scenarios numerous times and I feel very comfortable with where we are in case there's a catastrophic event that happens in Petaluma. Our public safety is trained and they are ready for something eventual that could potentially happen. I hope it never happens, but I feel very comfortable from the presentation I've seen that we are prepared.
Thank you. I'm going to repeat that question. In the event of a major catastrophe such as an earthquake, what do you see as the city's role and is it prepared? Ms. Harris?
Thank you. I actually agree with Ms. Harris. I think we've, those of us who have been on the council already are very aware of the measures that have been taken in the city to deal with catastrophes when they happen. And when we're thinking of catastrophes, usually we're thinking of flood or we're thinking of an earthquake or a very hot day like we had where we opened up our city buildings for people who did not have air conditioning and needed it, they could come there to cool down. But there are also other kinds of catastrophes that we are probably not as prepared for and we need to also add that to our list of things we need to do. And this is the kind of emergency that something like the H1N1 virus showed us and that is when people can't leave their house because of quarantine or because they have to stay where they are. That, how do we get services around to people who are not all together in one place being protected from the earthquake or the flood, but are actually happy to stay in place? And how do we get services to them? There, we need a little bit more work and I think our city can rise without a shortage.
Thank you, Mr. Davies.
Thanks. Well, we can always do more and be more prepared and one of the things that we should probably be doing more is public outreach so that people and their families can look after themselves in the event of immediate catastrophes such as an earthquake. But what I do understand the city's done is neighborhood emergency response team as well as a community emergency response team. And these are, these are great ways that we can facilitate assistance in a time of crisis. I know that the city just got a new mobile command center through grant funding, which is great. I haven't had a chance to actually tour the inside yet, but I heard it's pretty cool. Obviously, we can do more, but I feel pretty comfortable that the city has done quite a bit. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bunker.
Well, I'm curious to see, you know, what our emergency department coordinator has to say about this issue. But I also feel very comfortable based on, you know, what I just heard from council member Harris and from council member Barrett. You know, honestly, it's not something that you follow all the time as a city council candidate, but I would say I was, you know, very impressed with the Petaluma Police Department working together with the CHP this weekend to use the helicopter to, you know, track down two shooting suspects that happened over the weekend. You know, also I think we need to ensure that our public safety clauses are met if we do this, you know, through responsible spending. And I know, you know, you want to avoid layoffs and you want to keep on as many qualified and trained personnel as you can.
Mr. Main, what's your thoughts on that? How do you see the city's role and do you think the city's prepared in case of an earthquake or other catastrophe?
Well, I think you can always do more, but I think Mr. Davies is going to enjoy his tour of the mobile command vehicle, which is really a pretty impressive device, a necessary supplement to our community and came without any expenditure of general fund expenditures. Certainly, in the case of a natural disaster, a cross-town connector is going to be important to get people from the west side of town to the hospital on the east side of town. There's another promotion for that. I would love to see funding in some fashion for a more comprehensive public information system that can reach out to folks. You mentioned the helicopter up above and it would have been great if we could have had a resource to tap into and let people that were concerned or just plain interested about that event to be able to understand that. We certainly want to educate people about classes on how to turn off the natural gas source at your home and also to encourage everybody to get a disaster preparedness kit. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Glass. What do you see as the city's role and do you think the city's prepared?
The city is prepared. I was mayor when we had the floods at the end of the year of 2005 and got a chance to witness not only what the fire department does, the police department, and actually public service as well and public works because it's a coordinated effort and reaching out even to volunteers in this community. Because the turning point in that flood disaster on New Year's Eve of 2005 was a call that went to Chris Lind, who went down to the turning basin and secured a boat that had broken loose, that if that boat had gone down strained and reached the point where it would have clogged the water, we would have had a disaster like you couldn't believe. So this city is prepared. It does react. The city does depend not only on staff, well-trained staff, but also on volunteers. Also, we need to make sure that we're aggressive about requesting help from the state and federal government, which we did. We got help from FEMA. We opened up the community center. The Red Cross was there to feed people and I'm here to tell you that our town did it right when disaster struck a couple of years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Now.
I can't tell you how much I enjoyed that two o'clock in the morning phone call from Mr. Glass telling me that there was a catastrophe in Petaluma while I was serving on the city council. And it just shows exactly what Mr. Glass just said, that we came together as a community. If there was another major earthquake, the best place for everybody to go and it's already the staging area in place by our city staff is that of the fairgrounds. We have space for animals, we have space for people, we have space for all, everybody's known together. Our city staff is really, really prepared and I'm very proud of the training and the partnership that they have done with the school district when that catastrophe happens and children are in school. Because every school has a plan in place along with the city as a partnership. We also have the command center up in the very top of our water resource department on McDel Boulevard. Not too many people know that it looks like Star Trek up there and they've got all the controls for our flood. Our Salvation Army currently in town and I'm out of town, out of time, out of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kearney.
This is going to be hard for one minute. So this is what I do for a living. Every day I work to make sure that we can stay open and provide health care to the members of Kaiser Permanente in the city of Petaluma as well as the counties of Marin and the rest of Sonoma County. Can we improve what we have? Yes, of course. We can look at a program called COPE, Citizens Organizing to Prepare for Emergencies. It's essentially a program that is similar in nature to the neighborhood watch programs that we saw in the eighties where neighborhoods work together to look out for the neighborhood plan of how they can help each other and help the neighbors. Remember back in the day when we actually talked to our neighbor and went outside and communicated and knew everyone's name? Great idea. So we should give back to that, a program like that, so we can help each other in a disaster because our public service people are going to be tasked with other issues. We also need to look at business continuity planning for all the departments in the city of Petaluma and for also our businesses in Petaluma because it's not just the government that's going to be responding, it's the community as well. And I think I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Albertson.
We have been mentioning the flood in 2005. I was the incident commander of that incident when we had that event and it went fairly well and it too, though, was a learning experience. Should we have to go through, suffer through one of those again, hopefully we'd do better. The question, though, dealt with earthquakes and one of the things we start with is earthquake retrofit of our buildings. The city has passed an ordinance, a lot of the buildings downtown in the unreinforced masonry have gone through earthquake retrofit with steel and plywood. We talk about public education and getting messages out to the public, the schools, different entities, about supplies, about strapping water heaters, about heavy frame paintings and mirrors over beds and walls and protecting those things. We have partnerships with the Red Cross and with, for evacuation centers. We have partnerships with the Salvation Army to provide food in an emergency situation. The city has done a lot in its preparation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
This is the last answer to the last question according to the sign there. I kind of disagree with some preparedness, though my wife's actively involved in the CERT program. We recently received a letter from Mr. Paxton and Hammerman, who seem to be behind this thing, that the firemen can no longer participate, they no longer have the funding for it. So we already had a program that was training individuals to become involved and it's amazing what they went through. So, I mean, I think we had a program where citizens were doing it. Some of our council members, I know some of the audience have already gone through it. I was about to go through it, Rick Dent. I think that's a mistake and I'm not sure where the funding is in the fire, but I think we have to relook at that. We need the citizens' help in an emergency. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so very much. So now we're going to go to, it's like a liking round. Not really quite that bad, but if you think of, maybe, let's think about 30 seconds, half a minute kind of thing. This will be, some of these will be kind of easy, we're just watching the time to make sure you've got plenty of time to vote, to your closing. Let's start with an easy one in 30 seconds. But how are we going to start with Ms. Harris on this one? Do you, do you support or oppose Measure U, which is the store rate rollback measure, and why?
In 30 seconds, I urge a no vote. I think that this is an effort to bankrupt our city. I think it is selling and building goods to people that is, is just totally wrong. Brian Moynihan, this grungo former city council member, has wanted to not have the city council, the water recycling plant that we do have, that we need to have, and I have to stop, but yes, I'm totally opposed to this.
Mr. Davies.
I think we're all opposed to this, as far as I understand. I had the privilege today, actually, Jeff May was with me as well, to tour the Ellis Creek facility. It's an amazing, state-of-the-art facility. It's the envy of many other cities and there's a lot of opportunities. It's a great public asset. It's something that we purchased and Measure U, should it pass, would certainly put us in a very dicey position, perhaps bankruptcy, of course. So I'm absolutely opposed to Measure U, bad idea. We've got a great client. I urge everyone to take a look at it.
Mr. Bunker.
I also oppose Measure U. This is basically the reanimation of Measure K. I would find out that Karen Yu, or Karen Now, signed a petition in support of Measure K. It was a bad idea then and I believe it still is a bad idea now. It's going to bankrupt the city. We have a 2.4% loan from the state on balance, I think, to the tune of $120 million. And so if we do default on this loan, ultimately it's going to hurt the rate payers and it's going to help them. Nobody wants to pay a penny more in rates than they have to, but ultimately, even the taxpayers association is against Measure U.
Mr. Main.
Well, I'm against Measure U. Actually, I was the spokesperson debating Bryant on Measure K and we had in a very difficult economy to convince people that the prospect of saving 30 bucks a month was actually false and would cost us a lot more. This time, we've got a more dangerous economy and a more dangerous measure in you. You've got a situation where they're going to cap our revenues and let our expenses go wild and there isn't a single economic engine in the world that can withstand capping your revenues and letting your expenses go. So it's just a disastrous measure.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
I was the mayor when Show Nation and I worked together to secure 2.4% interest on the state revolving loan program. That loan saves the rate payer $60 million over the life of a 20-year payback schedule. This measure, if it passes, will cause that loan to be in default and the state will come after us for that money and that $60 million savings to the rate payers in low interest will be lost. Your rates will go up, not down, if this measure passes. I'm against the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Now.
Those know a measure of you, simple. But if we don't get the rate study, there's going to be more of Brian Moynihan. So we need to be proactive and show the taxpayers and the city rate payers what we are paying for it at Ellis Creek and show them the rate study sooner than later and those know a measure of you.
Mr. Kearney.
So I think this might be the only thing we ever all agree on. So I as well am against Measure U and I urge you to vote no. I think it's been said already eight times, but again, vote no. A measure of you will bankrupt the city and lead the high rates for everyone and I don't think that that's what we all want in that long run.
Mr. Albertson.
A repeat of what you've heard up and down the dais. This is a bad idea and I encourage a no vote on, on the measure. It's the plant that's been built, it just received an award, it's going to serve this city for years and years to come and it is state-of-the-art and the fees that are being paid are paying the debt and it's what needs to be done to accomplish the goal there with this sewer plant. Vote no on the measure.
Mr. Johnson.
Absolutely. Vote no on you and if you have any doubts, go take a tour of the Ellis facility. It is the most amazing thing. The future benefits that we'll get from that will long outweigh this. Vote no on you.
Mr. Harris.
To wrap it up, of course, vote no on Measure U. I've seen the economic analysis, it's a broad coalition that's against it, the Republican Party, it's against the Democratic Party, it's against the Sonoma County taxpayers associations, and against the chamber of governors, it's against it. So everybody of all political stripes understands that this could potentially bankrupt the city. Mr. Glass, per to the 2.4% loan that we received, that's obviously good, but also what this measure could do is it could also reduce our bond rating, which would make every project in this, in this community more expensive in perpetuity.
Nice job. Okay, so we're going to expand just a little bit again before you do your closing. We have a number of social services that are supported partially or a lot by general funds. What would you support? I mean, we've heard about the budget and the need to bring revenue, but of social services that the city is currently giving a pittance to, what would you want to see support continue? What, what social services do you think are vital? And Mr. Davies, we're going to start with you.
I think there's a number of social services that are vital. We've got vulnerable people in our community that need assistance. I think we do everything we can to ensure that we continue these services. I think that if the community is open to it, we should consider types of ways to raise money to fund these things. So I think, you know, I'm always more favor of building revenue and focusing on that first in ways that don't entail fee increases, but there's a number of services that we need to ensure are there for most vulnerable, most, excuse me, most vulnerable.
Mr. Kearney, are there ideas on ways to be, do you think you can support some social services?
Well, I think the original question was whether, what additional social services there are. Was that not correct? And I don't think the city can really afford to undertake any additional programs right now. I mean, we've got, you know, we've overcommitted as it is and I think right now we need to be, you know, focusing on encouraging businesses to come to the city, you know, so that we can increase our revenue stream and also at the same time, you know, we have to take hard-looking expenditures by that, I mean, reforming the current government rewards program.
Thank you. So I was trying to work with these audience questions here. So, social services, any room to go here?
Well, I'd like to see us maintain all the social services that we have now. I think I got a chance about two weeks ago to meet with John Records and go through the COTS facility over there. It's a tremendous facility. Petaluma People's Services doing absolutely amazing things for our community. I don't want to create a priority of social services that leaves out anything that's vital, but I would rather see is a really healthy economy, a healthy general fund, lack of reliance on TOT funding to support the general fund and pop that back into social services.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
The real answer right now is the community and volunteers and stepping up and helping the private sector get well in this regard. All of these entities are good. Petaluma People's Services, when I was mayor, I relied on them tremendously and they were there every single time to step up for our community. Obviously, COTS, Meals on Wheels, Boys and Girls Club with an after-school program for the kids to help them through academic challenges. And the mentor me, I support them all personally. I'm sure Mr. Main does. I ask you to do it too. Sometimes the city runs out of capability, not desire.
Ms. Now.
Well, I think that all our social services are vital to a healthy community and they are all equally important. I am probably the most active nonprofit volunteer and have been since I was a 4-H member and it was a community service project and it was very important to my family that we got out into the community and we gave back at an early age and now my children are giving back as they're adults and my grandchildren will be giving back. So I think that if we all give back as a community and volunteers, we can keep all our services. Thank you.
Mr. Kearney.
As the chair of the community development community for the county, we oversee the funding of homeless services throughout the county, which includes funding the COTS. And unfortunately, we saw, although we were able to maintain funding this year for COTS, we did see COTS lose half their beds. And so we need to look at how we can better fund services that care for the most needed in our community, additionally looking at how we can continue to do a good job with our horrible and low and moderate income housing in the city of Petaluma. We've won awards for it before and we need to keep working at that.
Thank you, Mr. Albertson.
You start mentioning names of nonprofits and charitable organizations in this town heavily to leave someone out. I have COTS on my webpage. It is a tremendous organization that serves many aspects of the community and is valued as a jewel within our community. I also agree with the comments about Boys and Girls Clubs and serving our youth here. But one of the things that this community has done is stepped up with their time and their money to be able to support nonprofits and I look forward to them to be able to continue to do that.
Mr. Johnson.
As potentially the second greatest volunteer to Ms. Now, I'm actively involved in mentor me and Meals on Wheels, but I even have more dedication to the senior center because I'm probably the oldest person on the dais right now. And we need to do a lot more, but you know, we have great people out there. Down the street for the senior center works miracles. We have the, the lease in the audience for the Petaluma People's Service Center, these people go way above and beyond. And we do have a volunteer attitude in this town, we really do. The people volunteer. We need to keep it up. Thank you.
Mr. Harris.
Thank you. When you run for office, talking dangerous concepts, sometimes economic revitalization, those types of things, but this is where the rubber meets the road because if we don't grow our economic, if we don't have economic revitalization, don't grow the general fund, we can't afford any of these things. All these groups are formerly PDSC and COTS, Boys and Girls Club, and I support them all. But in order to get that, to that point, where we can afford them, we need to expand our taxes.
Ms. Harris.
I think that the question is really what does the city, what does the city do? And I wanted to say that our city is the only city that meets its housing requirements for low-income housing and our city staff works so hard to stretch those dollars in such a way that they can feed out to the nonprofits in our community. We have Boys and Girls Club now actually living in two of the different low-income areas that we have that are in the housing. So that is one way that we have been able to do that. We need to increase it and one way we can increase it is by increasing our transient occupancy tax. It's something that I have supported and will continue to support.
Thank you. All right. Taking our tour around town, we're going to get into the center and I think Ms. Now mentioned the fairgrounds earlier. So what would a forum be without a question about the fairgrounds? So starting with Mr. Bunker, where do you stand on extending the lease for the Sonoma Marin Fairgrounds?
Well, the current lease, I believe, is the lease for $1 a year. That is through, I think, the year 2024. A few years ago, it was a proposal on the table to extend that until around 2060. I think it's ridiculous. You know, it's like 64 acres of land, they're going to be $1 a year for, for basically another half a century and I think it's a ridiculous proposal. We need to be doing more. I don't care what we do with it, but I'm willing to explore all the options we have and we'll point to even the ballpark that was interested in building and I'm about to run out of time.
Mr. Main.
Well, you know, we're big on heritage in this town and a way to keep our town unique from other communities and so the fairground is obviously important in that regard and I certainly support an extension of the fairgrounds lease. However, as part of those negotiations, I do want to look at some of the land that represents the fairgrounds lease currently and see what kind of alternate uses we can incorporate in a way to coexist out there in some fashion. So we will be negotiating with the fair board.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
I wrote an op-ed on this and it's really one of the major reasons why I came back. You can read the op-ed July 23rd, 2008 in the Press Democrat. It references the meeting that occurred two days before when there was an effort to extend the lease for 50 years for a buck a year. That's city land. We own that land. The lease expires in 2024. I hope we can renegotiate something before that, that falls in the fair director's court. We need more access to our land. We need, we need more revenue from our land. Thank you.
Ms. Now.
Well, I am a huge advocate of the fairgrounds and extending the lease, but it comes with an opportunity to continue our partnership with the fairgrounds and the fair boards to have a portion of that land for our new police station. The fairgrounds is not just a five-day fair of our agricultural community, but it's also a community hub that hosts many nonprofit fundraisers as well as, there is five schools located on our fairgrounds and they need the lease fixed so they can get grants to update the buildings at the fairgrounds. Thank you.
Mr. Kearney.
So I like most people. I'm a fan of there. It's great. But we need to look at what are we doing with the property the rest of the year and how we can better utilize it for the generation of revenue in the city of Petaluma and look at how we can better use the buildings, if not, the current buildings, work with the fair to expand the buildings on the property to attract outside entities to come to the city of Petaluma so we can increase our revenue that way.
Mr. Albertson.
Historically, this is an ag community and the fairgrounds is symbolic of that history. I believe that the rental agreement with the fairgrounds needs to be revised. And revised does not mean extorting unrealistic tolls from the fair board, but working on something that will win for everyone. One possible suggestion might be a simple, pick a dollar amount, a dollar fee assessed to every person who goes through the turnstile for every event. Subsequently, the fairgrounds success is the city's success and revenue generated for all parties.
Mr. Johnson.
I absolutely don't believe in extortion when it comes to any kind of development or any kind of business, but it seems to me, since all we've talked about tonight is revenue, revenue's been the key issue and we're making a dollar here. So I'm not sure that did a whole lot to boost our revenue. But I'm really more concerned with use. I really think we ought to have more access to the city, to the fairgrounds and more, a part of the decisions that are made and how it's used. And for keeping it where it is, I think it is a big part of our heritage. But let's make something of it. Let's make use of it. Thank you.
Mr. Harris.
There's definitely a win-win possibility here. So obviously, we need to reach out to the fair board and have those meetings with them again. Obviously, I support extending the lease, that's a dollar a year and with extending the lease, that makes them eligible for infrastructure upgrades. And then once we've done upgrades, they can have it and we can also then move to what part of the fairgrounds that we can use as a city. Do we need to, we have a sports venue there, we have an art venue there, something that will have another attraction of the city center.
Ms. Harris.
Yes, I think that the lease, to extend the lease of the fairgrounds at a dollar a year is not economically responsible. We have two major assets in the city. The number one asset in the city is our wastewater treatment center and that's under attack on Metairie. We've already heard about that. This is the number two major asset that our city owns. We need to have a fiduciary responsibility of city council members that we need to get the best deal for the city and the residents of the city of Petaluma. And that means that if the fair wants to renegotiate their lease, the ball is in their court. We have a lease with that until 2024, then we will talk to them, but we need to do it so that everybody's needs are met and the city is covered.
Mr. Davies.
Thanks. Well, I certainly support the fair, and I support our agricultural heritage and our urban growth boundary. It fosters that. But I also agree that extending the lease at a dollar a year would be irresponsible. And yes, as a council member, I agree with Teresa. It is a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the community is getting value for an asset like that. So I would encourage working with the fair board to come up with a win-win solution, hopefully. Perhaps performing arts center or stadium. There's a number of options there. Thanks.
Well, thank you so very much. It was very nicely done at Homeless all the time. And so what I'd like to do is afford you an opportunity for closing remarks. Just as a reminder, each of the candidates did a very nice job of one minute in introducing yourself and making opening remarks. We're going to start in reverse order. So we're going to start with Mr. Bunker. And I'd like to also take an opportunity to remind us why you should be the one that we check on our ballot.
Well, at the end of the day, this is still a city that's embroiled in team politics. On the one hand, we have David Glass, Teresa Barrett, Jason Davies, who even on the same flyer that's promoting all three of them. They encourage us to vote for the winning team. On the other hand, as Argus Courier points out, we have four candidates, Jeff Maine, Karen Howe, Ray Johnson, and Mike Harris. We're all managed by one person from Santa Rosa. You know, really, team, team politics is as partisan as a government. The gridlock in the city hall reflects that. Team politics is not going to build a rainier crossing. Team politics is not going to fix our streets. And team politics is not going to approve projects at the rate we need. So we really want another four years of team politics as an independent. You know, I am on nobody's team, but the team, I'm on nobody's team, but I represent the city of Petaluma. And I think that's what is most valuable above all else. Thank you.
Mr. Kearney?
I think this election is a defining moment in history for the city of Petaluma, and I think we need to ensure that we have the right kind of leadership to continue to develop sustainable growth that brings clean and green jobs to our city without compromising the very things that make this a great place to be. I have been unanimously endorsed by the Democratic Party, the Democratic Central Committee. I've also been endorsed by Lynn Woolsey, as well as a number of others. You can go to my website, jasonforpetaluma.com. And I've got the confidence of a lot of people, a lot of community members, because I can bring a balance between developing business and ensuring that we maintain the quality of life in our environment.
Thank you so much. Mr. Barrett?
Well, I think that we all know that Petaluma is facing a challenging time. And the decisions that we're going to be making in the next couple of years are going to affect this city for many, many years to come. The fairgrounds is one of those decisions. What happens at our wastewater treatment center, how we go forward with our staff, all of these are questions that will have long-term ramifications. How we go forward with development. I have a record of doing my homework. I look at the issues. I understand the issues. And I bring a long-term perspective to the issues. I don't look at just what we need for today. I look at what today's decision will cause in the future. We had a lot of development on the east side for many decades, which never built the infrastructure. And now we have nothing but traffic problems. That is not what I want to have as my legacy to this city. I want to make sure that what we do has solutions built into it. That's why I asked for your vote, because I can be your voice here at City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Thank you. It's been quite an honor to serve on the city council for the last four years, and I will be honored with another term on the city council there. With my educational background, my experience on the city council, and my business experience, I think it's the right tonic right now during these uncertain times, sort of to help shepherd along projects in the process right now. We prefer to economic revitalization all night. We prefer to, the general fund is dropping from $42 to $32 million. And I'll make, unfortunately, be elected to another term on the council. I'll make sure we bridge that gap, try to move the general fund from $32 million as high as possible to pay for all the things that we promised during the campaign. Obviously, we don't have a lot of time to go over everything tonight, so if you have any further questions, feel free to call me at home at 773-3196. Visit my website, harrisforcitycouncil.com. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, we sort of got away from it occasionally, but the theme here is economic revitalization. We have no choice but to attract business to this town. Any of you that have an 18-year-old or a 22-year-old, I dare you to tell me there's a job in this town, because I would tend to challenge that. We need to attract jobs that have a career incentive to fill our buildings. I've been doing this for 30 years. I have a total experience in dealing with every level of business, sitting in a room with them and getting agreement, getting agreement on why Petaluma is the great place to live that it is. We don't have a choice. If you believe that $32 million is attainable, I think you're an optimist, and I think that's a wonderful thing. But even if it is, would it be attainable next year? We don't have the revenue to justify what we need to do in this city. I'll spend 24/7. I will be attainable. His phone number, my cell number, 707-364-8149. And it can ring 24 hours a day. I promise you that. Thank you for considering.
Mr. Albertson?
Again, my name's Chris Albertson, and I'm a candidate for city council. As we close, I want to thank the AAW and the legal women voters, the Argus, for sponsoring this night. That was, it's nice. It's been entertaining. It's been educational being here on the dais. I have 38 years in local government. I have a record of accomplishment. I want to serve on the city council. You've heard many topics discussed here this evening of a variety of issues. I ask you to go to my webpage, electalbertson.com, and under a topic called Issues, you'll see many of the topics we've gone over here and in more detail than the minute that we're allowed here tonight. I hope as the election gets closer and we have a chance to talk further, I'll learn your support. I'll learn your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney.
My name's Gabe Kearney, and I'm running for city council, and I would love your vote. Thank you all for coming tonight and sitting through this, and I thank everyone on PCA that watches this for the next two weeks or three weeks. I had the experience working with top budgets as an appointed member of boards in our county. I was on the mental health board in the county of Sonoma, looking at how we provide services for mentally ill persons in the county. After that, I got appointed to the Community Development Committee for the city, for the county of Sonoma, working on how we revitalize the economic growth of the county of Sonoma. Those experiences, paired with my professional experience working in disaster management and preparing for disasters, made me the best candidate up here. Mark Leno, who is our state senator, also agrees, as well as the Sonoma County Democratic Party and Petaluma tomorrow. I was going to say you cut me off really quick there. Petaluma tomorrow, Sonoma County Conservation Action, and Coalition for a Better Sonoma County. Thank you very much. You go to vote for number four, gabe, J-A-V-E, dot com. Thank you.
Ms. Now?
Thank you, legal women voters of the American Association of University Women, the Argus Courier, and those in the audience tonight, and those watching at home on Channel 28. I represent the constituents of Petaluma. I am an independent candidate for the city of, city council of Petaluma. Tonight, we heard that we must improve our economic climate without harming the environment. We can do this by attracting new jobs, creating more shopping opportunity, which helps our state's tax dollars stay in Petaluma, supporting infill development to fight urban sprawl. Once Petaluma is financially stable, it is imperative that we create improved, continue to fund new and existing local parks, cross-town connectors, to relieve traffic and public safety, improve conditions of the streets, maintain a level of public work. Strengthening new programs and parks, and foreign activities for youth and adults are of equal priority. Please check my website, www-electkarenow.com. And I thank you for your vote. Good night.
Mr. Glass?
I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I am the candidate that has the experience in this race. I've served this community for four years as mayor, four years on the planning commission, and four year, I mean, the second year of a four-year term as city council, current vice mayor. But I am running for mayor. You have the only city in the county that directly elects a mayor, and the mayor's job is different. The mayor conducts the meetings. The mayor draws out all of your voices from all of the council members, no matter what their perspective. You know that I can do that. I've done it for you as chairman of the planning commission for two years. I did it as mayor for four. Yes, we need to improve the local economy. We will do that. I have experienced as a municipal securities principal for 20 years. I understand finance. I understand government. But more importantly, I understand you. Please go to votedavidetglass.com. Thank you.
Mr. Raine?
Thank you. Thank you to our hosts. Thank you for being here as well. It's been said that this election in November is pivotal, and that's absolutely true. On the one hand, my opponent David Glass wants four more years of the same, claiming proven leadership. What we're experiencing is a failing economy, litigation, and delays that have kept people out of work. On the other hand, I offer sound business skills and ability to reach consensus amongst opposing viewpoints and a passionate desire to make Petaluma better than it is now. After taking, after taking time to meet with me, the Petaluma Police Officers Association, the Petaluma Firefighters, and the unions of some of our other city workers have all endorsed me for mayor. I urge you to learn more about me, and I urge you to vote for myself as mayor as well. You can look me up on the web at www main four F O R mayor 2010 dot com. You can Google me and find more information on the campaign as well. Thank you. Good night.
Well, thank you so very much, candidates. For over 50 years, the American Association of University Women has sponsored candidates' debates and forums, most frequently with legal women voters and the Argus Courier. All three encourage informed and active participation in government. And because you've heard tonight or watching on Channel 28, Petaluma Community Access, you can probably bet that you agree with that philosophy. You can find additional nonpartisan information about the election on the league's election website, which is smartvoter dot word, all the words, smartvoter dot word. As you've heard, your candidates also have websites for additional information. As we close your evening, as we close the evening, I'd like to call your attention to several opportunities to see the candidates in action again. The city council candidates will be given another look at a forum being presented next week by the Petaluma Area Chamber of Commerce and the Argus Courier. That will be next Tuesday, the 28th, at six at the Sheraton Hotel. And the same sponsors then will bring you the council, the mayor oral candidates, the following week, on Tuesday, October 5th, also at the Sheraton at 5. Tonight's sponsors, AW, the League, and the Argus, will be hosting another candidate tonight, this time for Petaluma School Board. We'll be doing that next week on Wednesday, September 29th, right here in the council chambers. We hope to see you back. And we're going to proceed that, just that AW is going to hold a 25-minute discussion with components for and against the under you. So if you want to come in here a little bit more about that. Also, this is the time, I've, you've done so good to members of the audience, this is the time we'd like to thank the candidates for joining us this evening. And now's the time to give them a round of applause.